Bobby, baby.
Hmm?
Bobby.
Long time we don't ever stop.
Uh.
Not usually.
I picked it today and all it was a big toe. The nail split right in half. And the end was named with Rhonda. She was up for a little buying some shelving and stuff for this house. She picked up some metal for shelving that she put to the wall.
Brackets?
And then you can put the brackets in or the one inside another one. She grabbed the one and tipped it up straight up and down. It comes down here and down for. Oh. Glad I answered my home's answer.
All right, let's call it the order. We'll call.
Mr. McCaslin.
Here.
Mr. Christian. Mr. Hager.
Here.
Ms. Maddox. Mr. Russell.
Here.
Okay, we're going to approve the minutes of Scott and Tina DeBray Public Hearing on August 2nd, 2022.
I don't have a copy. I can't remember if I was here then.
I missed very many.
I know, but I couldn't, I didn't put my hands on my.
You weren't here.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I wasn't here, can I say?
You weren't here?
Oh, second. You were here, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I wasn't an alternate that night though.
Oh, okay, so then I don't think we can approve those things tonight. It was Vic and Larry and myself, so Larry's not here.
So do we still cast a vote and just keep staying so we're?
No, just, just on the record, if we table it to next month's meeting, I would include that one. We have enough people there for that meeting.
Approve the minutes of August 2nd, 2022, regular meeting.
It's gonna be the same thing.
And we're gonna go to application and wear construction site plan review for a mining permit to add 4.2 acres to the existing six acre lot at the Expo Sand and Gravel Pit, approximately 1,480 feet north of Kelly Road in the Townes Galloway.
Josh, want to tell us a little bit about what you're doing out there, what's happening?
So, uh, so essentially the life of mine is getting used up with the original pit. And, uh, so we're moving, uh, south. We're moving south and just more or less a couple acres south. It's about two acres, two acres wide as well. Um, um, just to recapture another 100,000 yards of material. Just right alongside the adjacent pit.
Looks on the map that the original pit was about six acres.
Correct.
And you reclaimed about three and you're mining three.
Yeah.
And according to the place where the plan says and looking at Dean's map, it looks like you're, you said you're moving to the south, but looking to expand it another like 4.2 acres or something.
Yep.
Couple things just to note for the record. Um, it looks like, well, first of all, there's a, there's some comments that we received from the DEC.
Yeah.
Uh, you filed a permit application to them. They're asking us for some comments which we can get to. Uh, the DEC completed seeker themselves and they indicated that it was a negative, a negative declaration for the project. In reviewing the project, um, I noted that it appeared that this matter should also be referred to the county planning board. The, the Jerry property is, is basically right on the river. Goes right to the river, which is the town line. So basically it's within 500 feet of the town boundary. So one of the things we need to do tonight, I don't know if we could give it any kind of final approval. I think we can ask, we can make some comments to send back to the DEC tonight. We can refer to the county tonight for their input, um, at the county planning board. And then, um, and then, you know, ask it to just be tabled to the next meeting to get the comments back from the county and then proceed from there. Do you have any questions about that, Luis, or no?
No, I don't have any issues with the expansion. I mean, I looked at all the comments that they made. They didn't have any conditions either that they put on it.
I walked it with them and, yeah. Right up to.
So it does, uh, one thing I wasn't sure about with special use permits is it, it's on somebody else's property. So you have, how, and you have a lease or an agreement or?
Correct.
And I don't know how that works with our special use permits or?
Yeah, it's, one of the things, the, the application's kind of a joint application. The DEC permit, if you look at that, is also signed by, um, gosh, by Carrie, Carrie Laduke, who is also partner in, in the Jerry Properties LLC, you remember? So she's, you know, they're, they're part of the application, part of the project itself. So I did a, take a look at that and review that. Also, I, I had a conversation with Dean Lashway today about the project and just reviewed a couple of things with Dean. These questions I may have had about the project itself. But I, yeah, I think it's pretty straightforward. I do think it has to go to county for these comments. But, uh, yeah, the, the DEC didn't have a lot of questions. They, they sent, uh, Mr. Randall a letter asking us to provide comments with respect to certain things. It's the letter in our file dated September 23rd, 2022. And basically the comments in regard to appropriate setbacks from property boundaries or public thoroughfare rights of way. Well, the setbacks are pretty substantial as it is. They're talking about 119 acres on this property itself. So it's, the setbacks are pretty substantial.
And it's an existing use.
It's an existing, it's an existing pit. Uh, fabricated or natural barriers. Um, is it bermed, Josh? Is there a berm around that or anything?
There's, uh, you could call it a berm because where they excavated on the original six acres before it drops down into the river.
Yeah.
There's, there's a berm there. And, and so the rest of our excavation, there'll always be a berm, just the way we're, just the way we're cutting into it.
And, and around the pit itself, is it treed? I mean, is it?
Trees, it's all trees.
So, okay, so you have natural barriers.
It's all treed and, and the, and the expansion is moving more towards the interior of the property.
Okay.
More so than, you know, it's not moving to the, closer to the property line. It's moving interior of the property.
Okay, so certainly there are natural barriers there.
Yeah, absolutely.
For things like noise, dust, fumes, things of that nature. So there are, certainly sounds like there's substantial natural barriers for that. Control of dust, I saw on the plan that you submitted to DEC that you indicated that if, if, if for those days, dry days, whatever got dusty, do you have water on site or some kind of?
We've got a water truck, yeah.
Okay, so to keep the dust down to a minimum so it's not gonna be, you know? I mean, again, you're a long ways away from a lot of like residences and stuff.
Yeah, no, it won't have to be a.
But you have something, you have a plan in place to deal with the, the dust.
Yeah.
Um, the hours of operation, I saw what was in the DEC plan. I reviewed that in conjunction with what's in our zoning, um, which is under section 740. And, you know, basically they're in compliance with what we have under section 740 for hours of operation. No operations on week, on Sundays, no operations on holidays, but, you know, six days a week it can be operated. And the last question I had was whether mining is prohibited at location. And it's not, it's not prohibited. It's, it's requires a special use permit, which the applicant's applied for. Um, they provide us, provided us with, I think, the sufficient information we would need to review that. Um, so it's not a, it's not prohibited. It's subject to a special use permit.
And it's, I think it's in the general zone, which is pretty much the zone where those types of things are preferred.
Correct, it is in the general zone. So, um, so it, I think those are really the comments. I think the applicant has really addressed most of those. So I don't know Bill, if you're gonna be the one sending back comments to the DEC.
I'm just gonna send your, whatever her notes are.
Okay, that would be fine. So I think, I think, you know, um, you know, the applicant's certainly addressed the issues that have been raised by the DEC and asked us for comments on. So I think if we, we submit those to the DEC, that'll satisfy their requirements for that. It does have to again be referred to the county, their comments, and then be brought back here for final approval.
I mean, do we have to offer any comments? I mean, if we're all on board with this, as you know.
They, they're just, I mean, they're, they're asking. Well, they says we have the right to provide comments. I think, I think basically just to do, show them we're doing our due diligence as well. I think it's a good idea to do it. I mean, I, nothing that's really changing with what they're applying for essentially. But, but I think it, I think it's important to let them know that we're also reviewing it and taking a look at it and making sure it complies with our zoning as well as whatever requirements the DEC may have.
So that's what, pretty much what we should do at this point then is table the application until next month.
Yeah, um, and just see motion to have it tabled, that's okay with you, Josh? You understand where we're going with this and everything?
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll table the application for a month, have the application sent to the county planning board, and then authorize Mr. LeCount to send the comments we made tonight regarding the project to the DEC per their request.
So just to be clear, DEC will probably be, if, if you're gonna get those comments back to them by the 4th, they're gonna be fine with it. So we'll be clear with them as far as the next hurdle will be just be the county and one more meeting and then we'll be good to go.
Yeah, agreed.
Okay, I would just, I mean, either way, we'd have to live with it, but DEC is so hard to get through with.
Oh, they're.
You, if you, if you put a, if you put a roadblock in front of, in front of them, it's not 30 days, it's 90 days.
Yeah. Well, they, they indicate if we don't get comments in by the 4th, they're gonna basically say we're not, they're assuming we're not providing comments.
Oh, I see.
So, so it's not like they're gonna be sitting around waiting for us.
Yeah, it's just gonna keep, it's gonna go on.
It's, it's, it's gonna move forward with them, sounds like.
Perfect.
So, yeah, and even, even the county comments, that's not gonna affect what they?
No, they're basically, yeah.
Approved it essentially. We just have to approve some of the special.
Yeah, yeah.
And the special use permit. Would you, I mean, on the section 740, I mean, your application meets all the requirements that, that?
Right.
Are mandated in that section.
Formality that the county can get.
Correct.
That's fine.
Make them feel good.
Uh?
So make them feel good.
Yeah, hey, gotta make everybody feel good, right?
So you, who did, you did a motion, Pete?
Well, I'll make a motion to take the application until next month or until, you know, the county has reviewed the plan.
Let's check it.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McCaslin?
Yes.
So you're set, Josh, till next month?
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
So that will be December 6th at 6:30.
I'll make a note of it. So hopefully somebody reminds me again. Thanks.
I'll call you.
See ya.
And then we'll move on to application of Rhonda and Wendell Barber for a minor subdivision of 74 acres located at 672 Iris Almond Road for residential purpose.
Okay, Wendell, why don't you tell us a little bit what you want to do?
More or less downsizing, sold the house we were in. It's like too big now, kids gone, we're gonna throw to about a 1,700 square foot house out front in the field. More or less I'm staying with my daughter and Rhonda's headed down with my son. Just gonna downsize, that's about it.
Okay. Um, again, I, I spoke to Dean Lashway about this application. Um, if you look on the map, that was done lot one, which is where Rhonda and Wendell's house is now. Um, that was subdivided, um, I think back in, uh, back in 2003 as a separate lot. So the remaining lands were basically lots two and three. On lot two, there already exists a residence, which I think your daughter may live in.
Lot two is the lot that we're creating.
Right, but I think, but I think Wendell and Rhonda are gonna build on lot three, right?
It's the one behind.
So you would be building on the remaining land.
Yes.
So lot three is the middle chunk.
Right, there you go.
Right, they're gonna build on the remaining land. And because we can only have one residence on, on each lot, that's why they're subdividing off lot two, where their daughter's residence is, and then they're building on lot three.
Are you building up front closer to the road?
No, it's gonna be back just a little ways, uh.
Cross the stream or?
No.
Oh, yeah.
Water. We've got the highest spot.
Wetland and water.
We're gonna stay just on the top. I don't know if you remember the old barn that was there. We're about 300 feet from the road.
I think I do remember that little barn, it's like.
Yeah, the little one, it's right about, right there.
Are you plenty enough from like the, where the new boundary line is, like where your daughter's house is? Wendell, you're far enough off that?
Yeah.
Can you turn your flashlight off, please?
I'm sorry.
Kind of blinding me. Thank you.
I mean, of course, you probably have access or you, you know, but access to the rear lands are still?
Yeah.
Possible with the right way or some kind of easement or something.
Yes.
The, that stream and the wetland there is gonna be a trick to cross, you know? If they, if somebody eventually someday doesn't have access to it.
We had a, uh, well, the people that moved and bought our house, uh, we used to let Bill Ashline every year with his farm equipment just go down the driveway and across and they have no problem with that either. And just beyond that, Rhonda's father, it's a 50 foot right away. Now, please get to, right along that line.
And it's still being farmed back there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no part of that either.
All those other lots along, those that were subdivided probably a long time ago? Is Sandy, do you know, like all those other lots that were part of that, those tax map parcels?
I have no idea.
I mean, there's a lot of older houses, that must've been a long time ago, right?
Well, if there are several of them and that went through as a minor subdivision in 2003, which I remember it was a minor subdivision when they did it, then?
This block, it's gotta be a minor.
It's gotta be a minor, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think in looking at the Barber's deed, and they bought it in 2001, they bought like all that land. So they haven't created any new lots at least since 2001, other than subdividing off their parcel in 2003.
Unfortunately, we have to go back to 1974.
Correct.
Or excuse me, 72.
Correct.
For now.
Yeah.
But the subdivision doesn't require any infrastructure.
Right.
Yeah, but even looking at the prior deed.
89.
Yeah, there's a deed talking even about 1986, going to Heartland Rock and Sharon Rock being the same premises. So I think it's been the same size since at least then. So we do, um, with this application, we do have to do seeker.
We do have the part one already filled out.
Somebody didn't.
Yeah, I think they complete, well, it's up to the applicant to be part one. So I don't know if Dean did that or it's signed by Wendell and Rhonda. Maybe they did, maybe they completed it. Um, but to proceed with seeker, we have to have a motion made that the Townes Galloway Falls Planning Board be deemed lead agency and that this particular action be deemed an unlisted action, which I think it is.
I would make that motion.
Still wanna repeat all that?
He said it so well. Usually if he's not here, I try to do something like that.
I'm sorry, Dean.
Um, that the, the, the planning board be deemed lead agency for the purposes of seeker. And that the project itself be deemed an unlisted action.
We don't have a part two.
I've got, I, I, I printed one off because I saw that earlier, so. What I'll do is I'll just read through the bullet points and then if we have any comments, we can go through.
And so when we're talking about the seeker and the subdivision, we're primarily talking about the lot that's lot two that's being created, correct?
Uh huh, correct.
How, how that subdivision is gonna affect, not really anything to do with the remaining lands.
No, and it's talking more about the community as much of anything, right?
I need a section on that, second on that motion.
Second.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McCaslin?
Yes.
So in just reviewing, Mr. Gabe, I'll go ahead, Vic can just go through that. So looking at the short environmental assessment form, uh, part one of which again has been completed by the applicant, uh, we can just kind of review that, see if anybody has any questions or comments regarding part one.
No, just a comment that they do recognize that it does adjoin a wetland, but, you know, the, uh, it's not gonna affect it in any way.
You know, I gotta find somewhere where it tells you exactly what constitutes wetland.
So the New York State Environmental Resource Mapper, you know, will show you on a map, as well as a layer on our county DAS map.
Just because it's water and cattails is not.
Well, if you're unsure, then the DEC will come out and do a determination for you and delineate the wetland area.
Because I know just off of Ruger Street, there fell in the land down there and there's all kinds of cattails and water where the old quarry used to be, where the old, uh, smat plant used to be.
It's in the town pots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
So, so Wendell, in the application, it does say, does, where it talks about, would the proposed action connect to existing public, private water supplies or public, private wastewater utilities? We're talking about the house and the well and something is on that parcel already. Is that what you're talking about, I think?
For the house, we're gonna do it our own for this.
For your parcel, you're not tying into the house, you're having your own.
It's all gonna be yours.
Just want, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, new set picture.
Okay.
I think it's gonna be a while before we get something to water down there. Yeah. We have down the sand.
Come. Does anybody else have any questions then regarding seeker?
No.
Okay, and I'll read through part two and I'll just, I'll probably read through the bullet points and we can add, ask if we discuss whether or not we think there's any smaller moderate impacts regarding the project. So under part two, number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? Number two, will the proposed action result in change in the use or intensity of use of land? Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that cause the establishment of a critical environmental area? Number five, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit biking or walkway? Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies A or B, public, private wastewater treatment utilities? Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Number nine, will the proposed action result in adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? And number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or to human health? Does anybody have any comments regarding any of those bullet points I just read?
Nope.
Saying would have no or minimal impact on all of those.
And some, again, it doesn't even, it's not, it doesn't create a critical environmental area or anything like that, so. No, I would agree. Um, so if anybody, anybody in the board agrees with those findings and those comments, then a motion can be made to have a negative declaration issued for this project.
I'll make a motion that we declare this to be a negative, make a negative declaration on the project.
One second.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McCaslin?
Yes.
Okay, you're approved, Wendell.
All set.
Um, now we have, are these maps?
No, wait a minute.
That was an approval on the seeker.
Yeah, that was the seeker.
I'm sorry, Wendell, you're not approved, you're not approved yet, my bad.
I'll make them.
Seeker has been approved.
I think we, uh, looked at this enough. I'll make a motion that we approve the minor subdivision at X-Met Parcel 231-1-25.1.
Mr. Hager?
Yes.
Mr. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. McCaslin?
Yes.
Now you're approved.
Now you're approved, Wendell.
Nope.
Good luck.
Good to go.
Thanks again.
Just signed and stamped it's a map.
Yeah, maps.
I think one of the maps has to be, has to be filed, right, the county clerk's?
We filed one with the county, county clerk and we file one here.
Okay.
So you just? Hager, activate recording.
So you just need to bring?
We get a copy of the recording one.
Okay, so bring a map down to the county clerk's office or two maps? One they'll file, one they'll stamp and then give back to you and just bring it back to the county.
Okay.
Those are the ones, okay. All set?
Yeah.
Now you gotta file a form, if you need, Wendell.
I would like to stay here.
For our records.
For our records. Yeah, came back to Bill. Bill don't need all those maps, it'll be on one.
Yeah, he's running out of room in his office. Do an adage.
They could be filed in the, in the, uh?
Okay, bro.
No, the vault.
Oh. Never been in there. Any new business?
That I know of. Do you have, well, other than Josh's project, anything else coming on the agenda next month? Is there any that you know so far?
Not that I know of. Bill would, Bill usually keeps me updated when we find something, but it's not due. The applications aren't due until two weeks before the meeting, so most people wait till the last day.
Unless it stays warm like this, I can't see anybody who would be moving after.
And the county planning meeting is when, or do they have time to get?
Um, it may not be, it may not have time to be on for this month. I think it's like tomorrow night.
It's tomorrow night, so.
It may not be, it may not be on our agenda through December.
So it'll be on the county planning board's agenda on December 7th. Our meeting is on the 6th. Can they make a, a motion? Well?
No, technically you can't.
No?
Um, maybe if, maybe if you bring that down to Glenn tomorrow, maybe he can do something about that, but.
Might be able to fit in tomorrow's meeting.
Maybe, you have to ask him nicely. But, I mean, it's up to Glenn. He's kind of controls that.
If it's, if it was a slow night, maybe they can.
So you can't make it conditional to county approval?
The only thing we could possibly do, we really can't, if you don't know what they're gonna find.
Right.
Um, is perhaps, depending what we have in December, maybe call us, you know, Vic can call a special meeting of the board. So these may be here, you know, as long as they advertise and do everything we need to do properly. Um, you can call a special meeting to at least here, say for example, we have nothing going on on our agenda in December. But we want, maybe try to get this approved, call a special meeting like maybe a week after the county planning board meets. And as long as it's advertised in the paper and it's posted and everything else is done for the regulations, we call a special meeting and get it approved. So honestly, I mean, yeah, everything is pretty much, is pretty much in line, so it wouldn't take very long.
That would be up to these guys, whether or not they wanna do a special meeting.
Yeah.
In the past, there's been issues with people not being able to.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it's December and it's the holidays and everything else, so I guess.
Unlikely that in December he's doing much mining, so maybe, you know, it's really.
I don't know, one of the states like this.
Yeah.
He's been in there pretty steady, hasn't he, looking at it?
I once things freeze up, it's a little hard.
Supposed to be 70 the weekend again.
Yeah, so just, just something to think about.
Old business. The call for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Sure.